All right. All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers and is open for public attendance and participation. Can I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Silman.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Brookman.
Here.
Commissioner Noor.
Here.
Commissioner Sandu.
Here.
Commissioner Gill. Commissioner Dale.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell had an excused absence tonight, so we're going to put that on the record. Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to take it on tonight. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, you are welcome and encouraged to participate in the meeting. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will normally allot, will be normally allotted five minutes to speak. Do we have any comments from the public on any items that are not on the agenda?
There are no written requests.
Thank you. All right. So let's get down to some business. So Planning Commission business. Agenda modifications, are there any, Planning Commissioners and staff, is there any interest in modifying the agenda? All right. All right, so approval of minutes from October 9th, 2024. And can I request a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, business item, consideration of general plan amendment 24-02 and rezone 24-04 to rezone 2192 Live Oak Boulevard from manufacturing, processing, and warehousing, light industry district M1 to community commercial district C2. Jaspreet Carr will, associate planner, will give us the information.
Good evening. So tonight I present to you our general plan amendment 2402 and rezone 2404. So the project proposal is the consideration, as mentioned by Chairperson Silman, to rezone 2192 Live Oak Boulevard from manufacturing, processing, and warehousing, light industrial district to community commercial. So the proposed project is located on a .43 acre parcel at the southwest corner of Live Oak Boulevard and North Gate Drive. It's currently occupied by RoadSafe, so they are currently, they sell PPE equipment to contractors. And on the screen you can see the site plan, so as shown, access is from North Gate as well as Live Oak Boulevard. And again, tonight, what we're doing is a general plan amendment and a rezone, so really it's just changing the color on the map as well as the rezone. So as shown on the screen, we do have it zoned as manufacturing, processing, and warehousing, to be now zoned as a community commercial, and it is primarily surrounded by manufacturing and warehousing. And so this would be now the new rezone, so again, going from M1 to C2, which is our community commercial district. So a little bit of analysis that was done, so any future conversion of this site is going to require a building permit for any improvements, and will be subject to comply with all of our C2 development standards, so that includes the building height setbacks, lighting, landscaping, parking, signage, and trash enclosures. In case you are wondering, I do have pictures of what is being proposed, because I know that's always something that we're excited to see. So, and a little bit of analysis, so traffic, I know that's always a concern too, changing the zoning. So just because the property's small size, staff, we don't anticipate the redevelopment to result in a significant traffic generation, and the proposed use that the applicant is proposing is to be of professional services, so such as like a spa or a beauty parlor. And we did confirm with the Public Works Department, so with the local street improvements, that it will mitigate any traffic concerns, so the potential impacts on nearby streets will be less than, will be less than significant. So here is what's being currently proposed. So this elevation is very similar to what's at Carriage Square. So the improvements will be done on the property, and then these are elevations shown on the left side, so the south, north, and west elevation. And again, this will be going through the building permit process to make sure that it complies with all of our current development standards. And here's the site plan as well. So you can see, we will have new landscaping along the frontage. So there will be new landscaping along the frontage. As shown on the site plan, there's going to be a new walkway, right here is going to be new landscaping. We have new, new parking spaces, a trash enclosure. So ultimately, it's going to be a really nice cleanup of the site, and they will be removing the chain link fence that's out there. So personally, staff pleased that this is going to be a huge improvement to the corner of North Gate and Live Oak Boulevard. And environmental was also completed, and staff has determined that, that there is no evidence in the record that there will be a significant effect on the environment. And as presented in the resolution, there are general plan findings. I'd be happy to go over them if needed, but again, it was provided in your staff report in this resolution, as well as the rezone findings. And as shown on the screen, so our recommendation tonight is to conduct a public hearing and make the necessary findings as shown as bullet item B on the screen. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. We do have the applicant present in the audience if you have any questions for him as well.
Okay. Are there any questions from the Commissioners? Staff? Nope. Jimmy? Oh, we're good. All right. Yep. Nope. All right. So I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak for or against? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Let's move this for a, request for a motion?
All right. I will motion that we adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Yuba City recommending the city council approve environmental assessment 24-09 by adopting a mitigated negative declaration subject to the mitigation measures, approve general plan amendment 24-02 redesignating .43 acres from the manufacturing, processing, and warehousing land use designation to the community commercial designation, and adopt an ordinance approving rezone 24-04, rezoning the same .43 acres from the light industrial district M1, zone district two, community commercial C2, zone district for the Smith Project located at 2192 Live Oak Boulevard, APN 51-490-028.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. We have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Gary, every building you've ever done is beautiful, so thank you for investing over there. I really appreciate that. It's going to be very nice. So, thank, thank you. Okay. We're going to move on to the next one, consideration of a general plan amendment 24-03, tentative subdivision map 2404, and Plan Development 19, Brownstone Estates, located on the north side of North Calusa Frontage Road between Hooper and El Margarita Road. Jaspreet, very busy, aren't you?
Hello again. All right, so now we have Brownstone Estates, so a general plan amendment, a tentative subdivision map, and a plan development. And so today, our purpose is a consideration of a resolution recommending the city council to approve the four items listed, so the environmental, the general plan, the map, and the plan development. So the project site, this is located on the north side of North Calusa Frontage between Hooper Road and El Margarita Road. A little bit of background, I'm sure we have seen this project come up many times. So in November 2021, Planning Commission approved the first tentative subdivision map 2101, which was the full site, so 25 acres to 96 single-family residential lots, and then there was this 7.84 acres remaining. In December 2022, we did receive an application from the applicant for, to, for a general plan amendment and a rezone. However, it was denied because we wanted to see really what the ultimate project was going to be. So Planning, the commission did ask for the applicant to come back and bring a full plan, so the development plan. In August 2023, Planning Commission considered the general plan amendment, a rezone, and the development plan for the construction of 138-unit apartment complex. And after that, it was, there was an ad hoc committee was generated, and ultimately, the applicant came back and resubmitted for a general plan amendment, a tentative subdivision map, and a plan development known as Brownstone Estates. So that's where we are today. So the general plan amendment, this is currently zoned, or is an office and office park, and what is being proposed is for low-density residential, which allows for two to eight units per acre. And the current tentative subdivision map that is being proposed is going to be for 54, 54 new homes, which is, comes in at about 6.89 units per acre, as shown on the screen above. And again, you'll see, so the access will be from Hooper Road as well as El Margarita. So the plan development, so what the plan development essentially is going to rezone this site to allow for development standards that apply specifically to this subdivision. So our municipal code has standards for the R1 zone, but the Plan Development 19 will allow for it to have its own. And as shown on the right, what you'll see is it's actually allowing this development to have smaller lot sizes, minimum lot sizes, smaller lot widths, actually larger maximum lot coverages and setbacks, and you'll see the minimum rear yard setbacks is also reduced. So as we've seen, and even, we did have our general plan, I believe it's a general plan or housing element zoning code was analyzed, to say, we do need some updates done to our code. And with that being said, I believe it's getting a little bit tougher for developers to meet our current standards, so that's why these plan developments are occurring more often, to allow for the greater lot coverages. So you'll see lot sizes are getting smaller, and then you'll, the homes are getting a little bit bigger, so higher density but smaller lots. And so this site is zoned for single-family residential homes, but the general plan is offices, office and office park. So really, this is now going to coincide, so it's going to bring it in line. And compatibility with neighboring uses, so this project is located in the southern portion of the Tierra Buena area, so there is existing single-family homes, and there is the new single-family home, so the Henson Ranch that was previously approved, and there are some small apartments to the east of the site. And as mentioned, the proposed density is approximately 6.89 units per acre, which is in line with the proposed general plan. So the traffic, as mentioned, this project has come before Planning Commission a few times, so we've had multiple traffic studies done. As stated, it was originally going to be, it was been a general office, so the office and office park. So the first traffic study that was completed was between office to multifamily, and you can see, so the difference was about 108 trips. And then now, we did have the applicant prepare a new traffic study between the multifamily to the single family, and the net difference was 421. So altogether, there is 421 fewer trips generated between the multifamily and single family that's being proposed, and 529 fewer trips between the general office from what is originally as the general plan designation to the single family that's being proposed. A noise study was also done, so there is potential impacts from Calusa Highway, so State Route 20, and a condition has been added to require a masonry-type wall, which will be along lots 28 through 54. So there is a condition of approval number six, which is requiring the wall. So as listed in the conditions, it does state that it has to be, either it's an eight-foot masonry wall or a six-foot masonry wall on a two-foot berm. And then this is a wall that is on, just along Western Parkway and Calusa Frontage, so it'll be very similar to this development by KB Homes. And an environmental was also prepared, and again, there was no evidence in the record that the proposed project will have a significant effect on the environment. And so there's also findings for the general plan amendment, which is outlined in the resolution, which was included in our staff report. Again, I'm happy to go over it if needed. There's also the plan development findings, so again, these are going to be, Planning Commission is recommending to the city council to make the following findings, listed A through D, as shown on the screen. And we also have the tentative subdivision map findings. Once again, these were all listed out in the resolution, and I can go over them in more detail if needed. So our recommendation tonight is to conduct a public hearing and make the necessary findings as listed in item B on the screen, and I would be happy to answer any questions. And we do have the applicant and the engineer here as well, to answer questions as well. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners?
So I, I do have a question. You had talked about this ad hoc traffic. I mean, that was the big push for not having apartments. What's happened with that? Can anybody give me an update?
I believe Ben.
I know it's less cars, but...
Yes.
So regarding the traffic, so after the, the last apartment application came through, there was a, a public meeting that was held at the River Valley Library, and then there was two updates that occurred at the city council meeting regarding how that meeting came out, and then a survey. And so from that, city staff reached out to obtain seven applicants for the Tierra Buena area bounded by township Jefferson, I'm looking at Ashley, the Jefferson on the north, Harder on the east, and Highway 20 on the south. So there was a commercial, and then six, six individuals across that district. And it was based on the reasoning that there was particular interest by individual people where they live. If they lived on Jefferson Road, there was concerns about the traffic on Jefferson. If they lived to the south near Rojo Ranchero, how Rojo Ranchero, a potential option of closing Rojo Ranchero might affect them. And so right now, city council established an ad hoc committee that involves Vice Mayor Dave Shaw, and then Councilmember Boom Garden. And so we've had a preliminary meeting where we met, and we've identified those individuals, and we plan to reach out to them to confirm that they're interested in participating. And then we'll work through that process probably over the next six months or so, as far as working through the ad hoc committee, and then ultimately making a recommendation to city council. So in the meantime, there's a lot of stuff going on. There's, there's things going on with the, the new general plan amendment that Doug's going to talk about, that implements a new traffic model that shows the ultimate buildout of some of these roads and potential ideas for roundabouts or cul-de-sacs on Rojo Ranchero, and how that funding comes in for impact fees. And then definitely regarding the traffic and what's this generated, again, it was, it's, it's general plan right now for commercial. And so those peak hour trips are at a higher level that's approved in the general plan. And so then it was, then it was looked at for an apartment complex for 120-plus units, and, and that was, the traffic study, believe it or not, it showed less peak hour trips than what the commercial would develop. And then that now coming forward is 54 single-family homes, which is even less than the 120 units. So, so basically, the, the traffic analysis is, hey, the 54 homes is, is substantially less than what's approved in the general plan right now for commercial development. And so there's typically one peak hour trip for each home, so about 54 peak hour trips. Is George Washington Boulevard great? Absolutely not. But there's a level of service that it meets, and it meets the general plan criteria at that level. And then do we, do we recognize that that intersection isn't great? No. But the applicant will be required to pay their, their fair share of impact fees towards the ultimate improvements that the city decides to make. Happy to answer any more questions.
Well, yeah, all, yeah, okay. I guess not from me, but yeah, thank you for that. All right, so I'm going to open it up for public comment, and if you want to go up to the mic, and...
Yeah.
Yeah, we appreciate that. Just before we can get you on the record, your name and...
Regarding the traffic study, was that done, he had said 54 peak hour trips, that's basically one car per house, I'm assuming? That's just an industry standard? Gotcha. Okay. I, I find it hard to believe that anybody buying a house, you know, six, $700,000, there's just one car coming to and from, from that house. Okay, yeah. Secondly, as far as the traffic situation, obviously, the, the few people that are here, they're probably affected by it. I live on the corner of the Frontage Road and El Margarita. Does it not make sense to address the traffic and come up with a designated or specific plan before you make the, the changes to the zoning?
Yeah, I, we can't answer that, but we can hear you.
You don't have an opinion on that?
Oh.
No?
No, I can't.
Well, you, you had an opinion on the, the traffic coming and going before...
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I just knew there was a, yeah, because there was, this place was packed with, you know, for the traffic, and I just wanted to hear where we were, what was an update from that, because we are the Planning Commission, the council has, you know, full reign to do what they need to do. All we can do is vote on what we have in front of us, so I do understand where you're coming from.
Okay. I'm just trying to...
I get it.
Put two and two together, like I said, you made some comments before the meeting started about the traffic.
Yeah.
Obviously, you're not affected by this whole situation. You're just voting on it, so, you know, it's...
No, that's why I appreciate you being here, yeah.
The, the, I get it, people need places to live, but since I've lived in my house for a year and a half, I've had two cars broken into. Just last week, on Saturday at 2:00 AM, there was people breaking into cars, I had police knocking on my door. So obviously, there's crime in the area, it's going up, I think some things need to be addressed before we add to that. So that's all.
Okay. Is there anybody else? Oh. Yeah?
So I, I understand that, you know, there was a lot of, I guess, pushback would probably be a good word, when it was proposed that apartments were put up. And so now, I, I'm amazed at how quickly a developer can propose an alternative that's a pretty nice compromise. And as far as crime, typically, crime that occurs in our neighborhoods isn't perpetrated by people that live in our neighborhoods, right? They come from outlying areas, so unless you caught the person, I don't know... Okay. But just typically. And, and as far as the Planning Commission, you know, we're bound by the, by, the city does their due diligence, right, to make sure SEQA, you know, all those findings are in check, and see that it fits the general plan, and it does, right? Yuba City wants housing, it needs housing. And so, I, you know, I think at some point, there has to be some appreciation for a developer in what he or she does with their investment, just like we buy homes and we decide we want to fix them up and beautify them to better our community. This developer's doing the same thing, and I just would hope that that would be considered. That's all.
Yeah, yeah, wait, wait. All right, yeah, yeah, I appreciate that. I thought you were going to talk to the, the staff, sorry. We don't really adjust the audience. Is there somebody else that wants to speak? Okay, there's somebody at the podium, and you can be next, ma'am.
Thank you. Loanna Hernandez, I live on the opposite corner of Hooper and Calusa Highway Frontage Road. We're on about an acre. We have an RV access that comes out onto Hooper. Hooper is a very busy star, I'm losing my throat, my voice, I work in Sacramento, and I work for traffic engineering. So I am looking at the impact with parking. Are these two-car driveways? Or, it looks like we're allowing for one parking space in front of the house. My, our daughter is 20 years old, she can't afford an apartment by herself, so we understand there's probably going to be multiple people in these homes, depending on how much the mortgage is. We've got a lot of young people who are having roommates, so I'm wondering about the parking impact. And so is it my understanding, Ben, that after this is established, the developer will still be asked to pay for any other impact that occurs? Like if we need an always stop at Hooper, or we need a always stop at El Margarita and Calusa Highway Frontage Road? I look at impacts to traffic more. I do appreciate it, I appreciate the developers. The two brothers did come on our property when it was first apartments and spoke to us. We did not realize it was going to be a three-story building at the time, and, and that would be looking right down into our property. So we do appreciate you coming back with single stories, but there, there's questions about what do these look like, how, how much parking is allowed?
I'm going to answer that, Ben.
So Jaspreet could probably clarify. From my understanding is it's a typical driveway, two cars can fit in the front, and there's approximately one space in front of each house for street parking. Are they tight lots? Yes, they're tight lots, but there's about one, one space. With this, we adjusted the, the Frontage Road, so there was not parking on the Frontage Road. I think we, the way we did that is we went at more landscaping, and we wanted to help narrow up the roadway, so it wasn't such a speedway coming through, that kind of, keeping a little less maintenance, and the narrowness helps slow things down, and the feedback we had before is they didn't want parking along the Frontage, so we, we, we shifted it around and modified that. Yeah, regarding, there, there's housing needs, these were probably be more entry-level that the applicant could address. I mean, nothing's entry-level, you know, but they are smaller costs, I say nothing's entry-level, but comparative to, you know, what's affordable for 20-year-olds. But there, yeah, we're hoping he could add to what, what type of market he's, he's shooting for.
Thank you.
And I guess if I got sidetracked here, the impact fee, so each one of these units will pay a traffic impact fee that goes into the city's reserves to use for improvements. And then it comes to the city, is that we're behooving as to when we use those impact fees, and how we prioritize when that stop sign is put in, or when the signal improvements at El Margarita occur, or when we push Jefferson through. And so the developer is obligated to pay that fair share, it's approximately 11,000, well, $5,000, $6,000 a house, a unit right now. It's approximately $11,000, well, $5,000, $6,000 a house, a unit right now. And then, that will go into the city where then the city will prioritize that as, as we see fit.
Okay. That'd help for you, okay.
That definitely helps, because we currently have some issues. Hooper's very popular to get to George Washington and in the morning, I, I am able to telecommute at times, so I do see a high volume of traffic. Only the north leg is stopped right now, so we do see that drivers will come up to the stop, not make a full stop. They're making that right-hand turn, expecting no one to come. Our son sometimes has to walk to the high school. And right now, with it being vacant, drivers can have a clear view for, I don't know, good 200 feet if a car is coming at 40 miles per hour. So, that's all I would be asking the city to, once it's established, please come back and look at your resolution speed survey for 40. I, I would definitely want to see it reduced.
Okay.
And then, look at traffic calming once this is established to address things that you might not see right now and the parking issue. So, that's all I would like to ask.
Thank you very much. Ma'am, did you want to speak?
I'm Sherri Patterson. I live between the frontage road and Jefferson and a little cul-de-sac. Been there 35 years, love it there. One thing I'm concerned about with all this, I understand the need for developments, is the traffic. And right now, Jefferson, I block my dog on Jefferson and it's, they're speeding down Jefferson and I can't imagine what it's going to be like when they put that through. And even the frontage road, there's kids walking to school, I don't have any at this age, but to the high school, there's no sidewalks and we've got people just, there's going to be hundreds of more cars and there's no sidewalks, there's no safety for us to... People want to walk to the bike trail or they're going to walk to Walmart. There's no sidewalks for us and it's a safety issue, I think.
Okay, I hear you, okay. Anybody, you want to go ahead?
Hi, Monique Melner, and my husband and I have property on the south side of Colusa Highway on the opposite, directly across the street from the proposal. And I think Ben basically addressed the impact fees, but we're, if there ever was an intersection, a signal at El Margarita and the highway, we would just hope that there would be, impact fees would not just be put on the development on the south side. Because at this point, perhaps, it's not even in the works, but should it come down the line, we know that all those homes in all that area will be using that light. And so, we would just hope that that would be considered in all of this, if that makes sense.
Okay, got it. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Joe Hernandez at 2775 Colusa Highway. First and foremost, thank you. Thank you for being so prompt, so quickly to change it up from the apartments to this idea. Awesome idea. My wife and I are 100% behind it. The only concern that I want to present and be on the record with is with the city to really keep in mind, yes, there's a lot more foot traffic. We've been hearing a lot about vehicles, but the foot traffic has definitely increased. Our lighting is pretty bad, there's zero to none. Maybe some of the homeowners provide some lighting for our kids. With the recent development of canes coming in, it's going to create a whole lot more foot traffic for our young, our young kids. And I'm not sure if you were aware, but while they were being, while it was being built and developed, a lot of our kids ended up going through the cyclone fence along 20. Someone went ahead and just cut through and, you know, thankfully, now it's accessible. But, before, when everything was being done, everything being, being constructed, there was no access for our kids. I just want the city to really be mindful, if they can have inspectors swing by, keep an eye out for our kids, more than anything, our kids, coming to and from Walmart, coming to and from canes, coming to and from the high school. Some lighting, if we can get some lighting along that frontage road, that'd be awesome. So, I just wanted to go on the record for that. But, again, thank you to the developer for changing things up. Yes, the improvement is going to be more than welcome and like anything, growing pains, I'm sure we'll address them in a tiny manner. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Ben, when you were talking about the, the ad hoc committee, the getting the, some seven residents together, that's where maybe you would want to be on that committee, to talk about, you know, the traffic and what's going to happen and how it's going to go through and educate the neighborhood. Well, it sounds like now we're looking at sidewalks and lighting and there's so much more to it now.
Well, they're very narrow roads.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. That's why I'm asking, yeah, just putting you on the spot, Ben, but...
Yeah, I would just, all the new development, even though it's that short segment, there are going to be sidewalks with streetlights. Because they're at the new development standards. There's a limit on how far you can make a developer, you know, go off-site and do that work and that's why they pay that impact fee, that it helps pay the proportional share so, so everybody contributes, so it's not just a burden on one group. You know, to the question that was earlier done before, you know, if, hey, if a new signal's got to be built, that's a $4 million price tag, putting on to one property is just, it's, it's, it's burdensome where it stops development. That's why you, they pay the proportional share, but then, there's these growing pains as to when do the improvements kick in. And so, I, I'm happy to go into any more detail, but that's, that's kind of where we're at and it's within the threshold where it's at. And definitely, what I'm looking forward with the ad hoc committee to hear those concerns because that's good feedback for us. It's definitely noted about the lighting concerns and maybe we could address. And now, the, the walking, the Dutch Brothers and the canes.
Yeah.
How do we handle that traffic control, traffic calming as this area continues to grow, because it will continue to grow?
And I'll just share that, you know, I, I live, and I want to share with you, I live on the south side and I've lived in my house 35 years and I complain all the time traffic, you know, we have a lot of building going on over there. The best thing to do is definitely get involved, be here tonight, thank you very much, talk to your city council. It sounds like, Ben, it sounds like there's some ideas, at least there's some conversations going and that's where I was excited. Harding Road has been, you know, so I, and I know I say this and I really am directing because I agree with you on the traffic 100%. I deal with it daily where I live, but until, you just have to get involved and try to make those changes and being part of that. It sounds like, I know the council, when I attended, they are really pushing to look at that traffic and, and work on that side, so I feel confident about that. Versus the apartment complex, you know, I have to, you know, it is what it is, it's going to be homes versus the apartments, that's what everybody, we heard you loud and clear, that's what you wanted, so this is where we're at tonight, so that's where we have to go with. So, on that note, is there anybody else that would like to speak in the public? Okay, one more thing. Don't ask for more sidewalks.
I promise not to. Just, again, for, just to be on the record, and this is going to be for, I'm sorry?
Ben.
Ben. I specialize in traffic signs and markings for the county of Sacramento. One of the simplest things that we do for the public, even though the roads are just hammered, is at least put down some paint and some reflectability. You'd be amazed, even though it is hammered, even though they are potholes left and right and, you know, the county, just like every county and city does, they do the best that they can with their budgets. But, at least putting down some paint, some reflectability on the road, it gives us at least an indication that something's coming in the near future.
Yeah.
It gives us at least some kind of guideline of where am I supposed to be driving? Like everybody knows here, when we get to the intersection at George Washington and 20, the volume of traffic is just tremendous. So, if the city can at least, once, twice, maybe even three times before the weather really changes on them, come on out, throw some, throw some paint down. I'm not asking for thermal. Thermal plastic, it's, I think, Centerline or someone else...
Got it.
Can do that. But, at least, you know, give, give at least the people driving an idea of where they're supposed to be at. It may help. We have seen, for ourselves personally, we have seen it that even though we hate when people end up in court, at least the, the person that happened to be involved in the accident has grounds to stand like, look, you were distracted, the reason why we know this, you can't get out of saying, I couldn't see the lines or I couldn't see where I was supposed to be traveling, especially with the foot traffic that we're going to be having with the kids till, you know, like I said, the growing pains.
Right.
Just asking for a little maintenance.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be a lot.
All right, well, Doug, do you want to give your, no, I'm kidding. We're going to keep an eye, we're all going to drive down there and keep an eye on it. We do hear you, we do, we do. All right, so I'm going to close the public hearing and I guess we need to go for a vote.
Through the chair. May I just make one comment? And I might need Ben's help with this one. And I do hear all of the comments, so I do just want to state, there is a condition which was based off of the traffic study that was first done stating that a advanced flashing beacon will be installed on westbound North Colusa Frontage Road. And so, Ben, I don't know if you have more details on it, but I think that might help address some of the safety concerns regarding, you know, walking along Colusa Frontage. So, that is one of the conditions that the developer will be required to install that. So, if there is additional questions, again, that is condition of approval number 35, that the developer shall build an advanced flashing beacon on westbound North Colusa Frontage Road or as otherwise approved by the Public Works Director.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just add, regarding the traffic mitigations, there is, it's a small condition, it was identified by the traffic engineer to put in, so we're requiring that to go in. And then, really, it's the geometrics that we're talking about with the new development, we're looking at, so those, so those corners will be finished off. Now, it's not going to be a ditch with a tree in the way that blocks visibility, it's going to be a radius with a sidewalk, with an ADA ramp and, and a marked stop sign with a stop bar. And definitely, we'll monitor it as it goes. But, the big improvements are, we're pushing, you know, the roads east-west, the traffic will be coming off Hooper and El Margarita, so it's not off the, the main frontage road. And then, we'll fix those corners up so that's a little bit better visibility.
Okay. Right, does someone want to make a motion? Everybody jumping at it?
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution recommending the City Council of the City of Yuba City adopt a resolution approving environmental assessment EA 24-10 by adopting mitigated negative declarations subject to the conditions of approval and mitigation measures and approve general plan amendment GPA 24-03 Plan Development 19 and tentative subdivision map 24-04 Brownstone Estates for 54 single-family residential lots on 7.84 acres located on the north side of North Colusa Frontage Road between Hooper and El Margarita Road. Assessor's parcel number 62-082-019-020-021.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Can we do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Dale.
Aye.
Commissioner Sandu.
Aye.
Commissioner Noor.
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Brookman.
Aye.
Chairperson Silman.
Aye. All right, thank you. And please stay engaged, go to, talk to your council, please get involved and stay on top of that. And I think the developer is here and they're also open to hear and work together, so thank you for being here. It makes a big difference to us, though. Okay, we're moving on. Next, future agenda items. Doug Libby.
Good evening, Chair Commissioners. So, our next planning commission meeting is going to be December 11th, so we're going to hold the first meeting of the month. So, hold your calendars for that. We're going to be bringing forward, there'll be one agenda item, only one. So, it's going to be our, I'll call it the, the refresh of our general plan. So, typically, this is not a comprehensive general plan update. It's important to recognize that we're, we're not changing land uses. This is more of a technical housekeeping update. Update the document to be consistent with state law changes that have happened over the last 20 years that we needed to catch up on. It's to try to streamline the document where we can, make it easier to, basically to follow, and update the mapping throughout. And so, we'll be kind of, my goal is to push out the draft document to you over the next week. Give you a little light reading material over the next three weeks. So, what I'll probably do is I'll push out the document, I will, will also push out the, maybe even some of the bullet points from the, from the, that you'll see in the staff report, that I've already got that done. And so, that way, it could kind of guide you through, you know, on December 11th. So, you would be making a, conducting a public hearing, making a recommendation, and then, we would be likely taking that forward to the city council at their second meeting in January, so...
And I will not be here December 11th, so I just want to make sure everybody knows that for a quorum.
Vice Chair will be up to bat.
Vice Chair will be up, so I'll be in New York City, okay.
Good for you.
Yeah, all right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Development Services Director report.
All right.
Is it about traffic?
My favorite guy, favorite item.
Yeah, I think you did very well.
More people, more traffic.
I know, what are you going to do?
But, we'll get through it. And I, I look forward to the, the ad hoc committee because it will be an opportunity for people to voice.
Yeah.
And I think there is some real traffic calming stuff that the city, we need to start identifying and implementing. But, because Jefferson one day is going to punch through and that's going to bring more traffic, and then, how do you slow them down and do that? So, we'll keep working through it. What do I got? We have some, a lot going on. And so, if anybody's been over there, it's crazy, it's the raising cranes and Dutch Brothers actually do a soft opening today. And so, if you go, if you make it out of, before 8 o'clock, if you want to swing by and get a free Dutch Brothers, it might jack you up a little bit for your, for your evening, but, here's my list here. Okay, so, so definitely, so there's been concerns, like usual, we have a new restaurant in town, especially a popular one right off the road, traffic is crazy. And so, with Ashley Public Works in coordination with the building department, we've, we've been reaching out to those managers, like, hey, what's the plan? What's the plan on how to try to implement some sort of traffic control? It's never quite enough because people just park every which way and then how busy it gets, but there's, there has been, believe it or not, some plans about security guards and some cones and where to overflow to keep them off Harder Parkway and to try to keep them going. The police department's been out there to try to kind of keep them flagging. And they said basically, hey, expect it to be crazy about, for the first month. And this one's going to get really crazy because Dutch Brothers is open officially Friday. And so, you got a couple going at the same time and be patient, but people are going to be parking in the bike lane, people are going to be backing up on the frontage road, but in a month from now, we'll kind of reevaluate and find out, is there a real problem or is it just kind of a temporary problem that we got to work through? So, revenue measure, I mean, everybody's kind of probably tracking that a little bit. It's not great, it's not looking like it's great, there's still some votes to be counted. And so, city staff will evaluate that and looking forward on how that kind of affects different, different levels of service. But, the, the, not much to say at this point, except that, you know, there were some items that were identified, you know, with traffic enforcement, beat six and some of the road repairs and some of that, some flexibility on how to implement some of that traffic calming measures, a little bit more money, that's, that's probably off the table for at least this round, so more to come with that. I recently, Theora Estates, if you remember that, there's a small subdivision up off Elmer and, and Tulley Parkway that is sold. There's a development, I believe InterWest is the purchaser, and so, they submitted a modified map, so it was less units, so they, they went from 34 to 31, 33, three lots less. And so, and we, they tweaked the road alignment a little bit, but there's still an opening on Elmer, there's still an opening on Tulley Parkway. And so, through the municipal code and, and we have a way to handle a minor modification, substantial conformance, if it hits those items where it doesn't increase the lots and it's substantially in compliance, and so, we've just approved that. And so, we're looking forward to the process to see that come forward and so, to fruition. So, most likely, we might start seeing some building on that next year. So most likely, we might start seeing some building on that next year. West Elmer, there's a new subdivision we might have talked about on West Elmer. So North Butehouse on the west side of the road, there's about 54 lots, 52 lots. I've seen different numbers, but there's a tentative subdivision map that's been submitted. So we're starting to see that infill, right, in that Terrebonne area as the city keeps creeping out west. And so traffic's going to be a big deal. That requires an annexation with a LAFCO process. And so there'll be a lot of talks about traffic there and how we improve that intersection. And we're looking at really if that's the trigger to build Tully Parkway to Butehouse Road. And so that's what we're getting into the weeds with the traffic consultant right now, to say, hey, have we hit that threshold? Let's try to build some sort of blow-off to extend Tully Parkway, so people don't have to go up Elmer. You might get those 54 homes, but not, everybody's not short-circuiting it. So more to come with that. That'll probably be a highly discussed meeting when that comes through. But that's kind of in the works right now. ADUs online, and so Doug probably could add to it, but basically, there's a state law that effective January 1st, there are supposed to be pre-approved ADU plans, or a way to get ADU plans that can be purchased. And so staff's working on implementing that, so we have that available. Bridge Street in Shasta, we received a development plan submitted for a gas station and a Starbucks. We might have talked about that, but it's officially come in. And so there's definitely an effort on our side to make sure it's a good product. And so it's a highly visible location. You know, the city's put a lot of investment into that area for reinvestment, and so, and how it ties into our downtown. But that project's in, and we're working with the developer to bring that forward. Bog Road Sewer out to bid, so a big thing southeast Yuba City is Bog Road, Newcombe Ranch Development, and where that's at. And so one of the key infrastructure components, the city's trying to build the road and that infrastructure first, so we're not after the fact. And so right now, that project's out to bid, and we're hoping to start in the spring. So real traction on seeing those improvements come in. City signs, the city issued a contract, Ashley brought it to the city council recently, that we issued a contract for the two city signs, so northbound 99, and then coming in on 20, on Highway 20. So we're expecting to get busy and see that in the spring, get installed. Doug probably talked about the general plan amendments, a big deal with the traffic model, and then how that affects our impact fees for roads. We're doing an update. And two more things. So Jaspreet, I'm going to kick to her in a minute. She's got some nice elevations about the master plan, so what that model homes look like for Johnson Ranch that are coming in. And then I just wanted to give everybody awareness that some of your terms are coming up, believe it or not. Four years goes by like this. And so Justine has resigned. And then Jackie, Stacy, and Bovin, both, all three of your terms are up as of February 27th, next year. And so, but that doesn't mean you have to go, because we love you, we appreciate you, and that $75 is hard to replace. So, but with that, the city clerk will be doing applications. If you have any, please apply. We would definitely love to have the knowledge and the process. It takes a little time.
So you need us to reapply?
Yes, I do.
When do those, when do they start accepting those?
I don't, I didn't get the exact date, but I expect that they start going out here the end of November, December, as far, and then the mayor reviews them, and then they make the process through the next couple months afterwards.
And then I had a question for you, referenced Justine. Should they, since she's officially resigned, should they take her name off roll call, so you don't have an absence every time?
So this is a little bit interesting, and we're getting to it, and I apologize for that. But it's, she's resigned formally at the meeting, and the city clerk was wanting to get something in writing. And so we didn't get anything in writing, so we were counting, if we, so we're expecting something in writing soon. But if not, we'll work through it. But it was basically, we're trying, we didn't get the official resignation in writing that the city clerk asked for, so it was left for this meeting. But yes, we plan to remove it at the next meeting.
All right. I just thought, isn't it, if it looked bad for the city if you constantly have an absence?
You're allowed four absences, believe it or not, four consecutive absences, non-excused. And then that's where we start having a hard discussion. So if you want to play hooky one night?
We'll think about it, right?
See you in February.
I didn't know I had to reapply. It was easier to just say yes.
There are no turn limits.
There are no turn limits.
There are no turn limits. And then Jaspreet, I don't know if you want to show, I don't know if it does it justice up on the screen, but I figured everybody wanted to see him.
Yeah, maybe. So this is the Johnson Ranch Estates. So again, this was approved back in May 2023. So these are the elevations. So they just recently submitted for their master plans, and, you know, it's a little bit different than what we've seen. It's the K-Hoff, I can't pronounce their names, so I'm just going to say K-Hoff. So it's their, I believe it's their first time developing here, which is really exciting to get new developers in Yuba City. So they've got more of like a Spanish, Mediterranean farmhouse elevation. So they've submitted for two model homes, which is currently in review. And so a little bit more elevations that you guys can see on the screen. So we're really looking forward to that, and it's super exciting. But one of the things I kind of briefly mentioned in my presentation earlier as well, so the 45% lot coverage, again, this is something that we're starting to struggle with here, and something that Doug will be bringing forward one day soon, as he found out today. We're going to do a zoning update to change the lot coverage allowance in Yuba City. So currently, for a single story, we have a 45% lot coverage. For a two-story, it's 40%. And what we're seeing is it's really hard. Again, we've got smaller lot sizes, but the homes are still that 2,000 square footage. So once you meet lot coverage, you can't really build anything additional that's permitted. So with that being said, we might, you know, bring it up to like 50 or 55% without having to do plan development. So something that I actually saw on a site plan today, one of these homes, it's already at lot coverage. So yeah, it's definitely exciting to see new development happening. And yeah, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. All right. Well, adjourned for Happy Birthday Boy, because he's got to get to dinner.